Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 20th Select Board Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a warm evening and we need to just move along through the agenda. And we're going to start off with the...
Can we take it out of order so these fine people can remove themselves from us?
You don't want us to suffer with you?
Remove themselves from the sauna, our tropical paradise camp?
I'd be amiable with that. The board agree?
I'm good with that.
Mr. Barber, say?
Am I first on the agenda or am I depriving somebody else?
You're last.
I see a cripple here. I don't want to take his part. You know, same old thing. I don't know what you'd like to hear. We have three veterans presently receiving Chapter 115 benefits. I have not heard anything else about the certification that's supposed to be implemented. When that happens, they're going to give the towns, I've been told, a year to get their Veterans Agent certified and then the 75% reimbursement will go down to 50 if they don't get certified. So that's the, whatever the word is to...
The deal.
Impetus to get it done. But I, all these guys that do this full-time have, they had a nice week-long meeting down in the Cape this summer. They all get together and say, "This is what we want." This is, it's a little click-type thing and I have no idea what's coming, but...
No other time?
They'll be very well-prepared for it. All those part-time schmoes are going to have to deal with it. What was I going to say next? I thank you very much for the new computer. I don't know what else I had to say. It's pretty much the same. Our budget's reduced at this point in time. That can change, you know, as we learn instantaneously. Oh, I know what. I have had numerous people, less than five, but a lot more than usual, contact me or leave a message with Christina that they want some help. So I call them. We have one or sometimes more meetings and poof, you never hear from them again. I make a follow-up phone call. I send a follow-up email. I'm just telling you, the door is open. I don't know, you know, what people say later on. I don't know why they get back. I guess we were able to solve their problem or answer their questions. Right now, there's a gentleman that I spent some time with. He called me. I returned his call. He's trying to get a DD-214 and he's not getting satisfaction out of St. Louis. That's dragged on for four months, I want to say. So if you get calls down here, or, I don't want people to get lost in the cracks, but I am not going to, you know, after two or three returned calls, I'm not going to babysit you and the information and the help is there. I wish more people would take advantage of it. So the last year's appeal for some funds was very successful. I put it in the report. I think we raised $700 and that's tapered off quite a bit. I don't know if the new mailing went out or not, but...
This was fuel assistance?
This is for whatever kind of assistance. I haven't spent any of it, but that was the impetus for the whole thing. A veteran that needed some fuel assistance, you know. If you come in for whatever reason and can make me buy the story, I'll give you some money. It's not just for fuel. It can be for food. It can be for, you know, you lost your job and you need to make a car payment or you're going to lose your car, I'll follow through and check up on it, but whatever it takes to get somebody over a rough hump, that's what's there. I have had no requests and I don't know when that's going to happen again. So at this point, that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
You have any questions? Come on. Tough question. I came all the way down here to this.
I asked my woman. You called her down here to get your new laptop?
I did. Well, I'm probably one of the few people in town that has their personal cellphone number up on the web just to deal with it, so, you know, you want to get some help, give me a call. And that is information that's available on the Millville website as opposed to calling downtown and not being able to get ahold of me. My phone number's up there, I think, isn't it?
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Thank you.
Trustee of the Memorial Park?
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Welcome.
Thank you for inviting us to be able to talk about our accomplishments for the last fiscal year. I'm Elaine Ethier and I'm the Secretary on the Board and I represent the other board members, Margaret Carroll, John Hadley, Richard Hurtu, and Norm Thewat. Our budget for the fiscal year was level funded at $500. There's a lot that happened in the park this last year. Of course, our major event is the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony, which has been taking place for the last 32 years and it's always well-attended by the community. And we're very grateful to the Cultural Council for the $200 grant to support this event. Again, the park was the setting for the Memorial Day ceremonies, which is a very special day in the community. The Centennial Community Day last fall was a success and the trustees were happy to provide the sound system for both of these events. There are official forms on the, to use the park and to use the sound system that can be found on our website. The appearance of the park in the monument area was improved and changed by the construction of a cement walkway. The walkway was planned to allow access to the back of the monument so that it is inviting people to view both sides of the monument. It opened up the area quite a bit in that all this work was accomplished by volunteers at no cost to the town. We removed the shrubs that had taken over the monument area and the flagpole. And we selected bushes and shrubs of slow growth and low maintenance to landscape around the walkway and to give an appealing view of the monument area. We removed a large maple tree that had started to rot and was also blocking the security Our goals for next year is to do a little bit more work on the monument area as our budget allows. We want to continue with landscaping, laying down landscape cloth, mulching in the area and adding some perennials and such things to make it more appealing. And we have a couple of other, we also are planning to enter a float in the Centennial Celebration, so we're working on this also. That's a goal for next year. And that's about it. I'd like, again, it's been my pleasure to be able to present the trustees of Veterans Memorial Park and we thank you for this opportunity. You have any questions?
We thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
I have a question. Who's your chair? Is it you?
The chair is Richard Hurtu.
Okay. Because I'm sure that, I'm on the Centennial and I'm sure that Margaret keeps you abreast of things that we're doing, but I'm wondering if we should probably send you an official letter with some of the dates that we currently have that may involve the park so that we can work together, especially if you're doing work, make sure we get the paperwork filled out, so...
Exactly.
I'm just sitting here and I hear possible work and it would be great to work together to, you know, have that happen off of those bigger events that we're planning.
That would be great.
On our agenda too, so we'll get those too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It looks great down there.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you, Elaine.
I can leave a copy of this with each one of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you again. Thank you.
Can I bring up something after that?
Please do.
Might be a little more appropriate for regular selectives meeting. I have brought it up before, a regular selectives meeting. I don't expect any results, but I'm going to say something again. Before Memorial Day weekend, I have the privilege of going around and putting a flag on all the known veterans' graves in the three cemeteries here in town. Actually, there's four, one of which is pretty much totally ignored. The one at the Chestnut Hill Meeting House is taken care of very well by the association that has charge of that. There's another one on Providence Street which seems to receive little or no attention and that has a member of the Coast Guard buried in him. But the largest cemetery in Millville is called the Wilson Cemetery and it's up on Central Street and it has an active use. People are interned there yearly. That place is really going to hell. There are dozens and dozens of small saplings that have taken root and are obliterating graves and whole areas. It has a very limited budget that, I don't know where the funds come from, but those people go up there and usually cut it for Memorial Day. I know since Jen's dad has passed that the priorities of the Highway Department are a little bit different as far as size of roads and whatnot and I don't know who directs Mr. Malali to get things done, but I think that it would be great if Millville put, you know, once a year, let's do a little section or see what we can do to make that place not such an eyesore. It's kind of...
Lincoln, I actually, I was, that's actually run by, there's a board of trustees for that.
I know. Usually done in...
She actually still, Jen Nealon or...
She lives in New Hampshire.
Somewhere. I heard Rhode Island, so I don't know. But anyways, Susan Robbins and Tina Landry, her daughter, I think Neil Robbins too. I think it's the three family members and then Jennifer Nealon are in charge. I spoke to them because they're frustrated because they can't get their membership together to take votes and to do things. And that's something that they've been struggling with. I offered them some suggestions, but they don't run by municipal law, so calling a meeting and doing things has been very difficult for them.
I just think of it psychologically that that's kind of Millville Cemetery.
Yeah, and, no, I talked to Suzie and Tina at length about it because, you know, their brother and their son, it's buried there.
Right.
They did say there's very limited lots left. There's, like, they said there shouldn't be any more burials is what they had, they're under the understanding of, but you're right.
Money is safe.
But there is times that, you know, trees have fallen and it's been taken care of.
Well, I walked the whole thing and it's...
The wall. I mean, you can drive by and the wall is a mess. I know she said to me, "It would, you know, be great if the town took it over," you know, it's just casual conversation. So I know they are feeling the way you're feeling and they're a membership, so I don't know if we can reach out or you can reach out or they can reach out to us, but I think it's a feeling that everybody has because you enter into the town and that's what you see.
Well, the buck stops here, you know? I'll throw John Dean under the bus. I know that the Meeting House Association would approach him annually and say, "Hey, when you guys are out there, can you do a little bit of cleanup on 122 there, the cemetery that really doesn't get attention?" And they would go in there and pretty much open it up from a year ago when they were in there and that's the only attention it ever got. It would be nice if we could find a little bit of time once a year to do something out there at the Wilson Cemetery. That's my two cents.
Mr. Hurtu?
Yeah, I was just going to throw a couple of questions out there. We have, over at the park, have, on a couple of times had inmates come over for a day and do a lot of work for us. And then we had another time when the scouts were going to come over and do something for us. I don't know if inmates could be used if it's not public property. I'm just going to...
I don't know anything about it. I just change flags once a year.
Right.
It's really going down the hill.
Yeah, well, again, just a couple of ideas that maybe we could tap into those resources to where one day we could get some inmates down there and get them lunches or approach the scouts and see if they would want one or two days a year, like in the spring or something. Again, I just thought I'd throw in my two cents, see if there's any possibility of tapping those resources.
The wall's going to need some capital to get that straightened out.
The inmates do a great job when they come down. You just have to feed them. Get them something to drink and they do a super job.
Yeah, but you've got to get them sharp tools and...
They had tools over there too, so...
I was going to say, they did some work, they did some work before in town.
They've done a lot of work.
They've done a lot of work in town.
I think they did, yeah.
And I'm not volunteering to supervise the inmates when they're out there and I just know that I probably walk through there at least as much as anybody else and it's only once a year. And I have watched a very steady decline. The trees get bigger and bigger and they go from being a snip, snip to, oh, now it's a project kind of thing and then it becomes an overwhelming job, you know? Enough said. Thank you.
My only, thank you for that, but right now I'm in a quandary as to the suggestion...
Well, you get that list of excess cash and you're trying to find a way to spend it.
Haven't found it yet.
The inmates have.
Yeah. Maybe a pole ball, I think it'll help. Planning board.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Evening.
Good evening. We'll talk about Chestnut Heights Brown Bear Circle. We had grave engineering go to the site. They went to the site and they drew us up a plan of action that they think will work and we think it'll work also. I should have made copies of this.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have the copies?
Yep.
Okay. On this page you have the site.
The page is numbered, Jen?
It's in our pile.
The back, ladies.
It's in our pile.
Along with the drawing.
It's in the back. As you, look at the entrance going in to the left. On each side of the entrance, there's a box, it's a holding box where the drains run into there and then they leak from those boxes. They get filled too quickly. So what they're proposing is to dig a trench across the road and connect the boxes together. And also, you can see on, to the left, there's a black line that goes down the side and then over to the left here. That would be a cement pipe piped into the back and the water, as it overflows, would go into this pipe instead of up into the street now.
Pen and string pipe.
Yes. It flows into the back and down into the woods and there's a large wet area back there. Now is where it would flow down to. It's not going to affect anyone's property as far as putting water on anyone's property where there isn't water. The engineering was paid for. The engineering cost was $1,860. That was paid for. But what, the thing we have here is in order to make the repairs that need to be done up there, I, on this page here, we all have the list here, it comes up to $9,200. So I know, we were talking town funds, some highway funds, wherever we can pick up some funds to try and get this project done. These people have been there for how many years now?
Fifteen years, twelve years.
And they keep cleaning the streets themselves. The highway does not follow that.
One other question.
Go ahead.
Is this approved street?
No.
No, that's why we're trying to get this done.
And the highway's not going to, they're not, the public claims to do anything.
Okay.
And the town doesn't have to give them any money because it's not accepted yet. So we're not, like, I understand what you're saying.
Well, here's a scenario where it gets a little sticky. The applicant, ten, fifteen years ago, came before the town. He had a set of drawings showing everything that was to be done over there. He filed an application. He paid his fees. Those drawings were reviewed by the town's engineer who was...
Antis.
All right, so they were reviewed by the town's engineer, reviewed and approved. Then the original developer sold the undeveloped property to...
Another developer.
Another developer. The developer then came in and built it according to the approved plan by the planning board. The approved planning board, the approved drawings showed two chambers to hold the water and they were greatly undersized, but they were approved by our engineer, approved by the planning board and designed according to the approved plans. So now, everybody has done what they're supposed to have done except the engineers miscalculated the size of these chambers, so now the developer's gone, these homeowners have lived there and that's what's left with that road. Now, if the town wanted to fight it through litigation, it could conceivably be a lot more than $9,000. And so the planning board had numerous discussions about this with the town planner and the board felt that this might be the easiest way to resolve a scenario where the excess water that's currently going down Old Chestnut Hill Road is creating a problem for the hot, for the residents of that part of Old Chestnut Hill Road. So there's mistakes, mistakes, mistakes. And everything was done according to an approved plan and now we're left with this water, excess water, on these chambers that are 25% of what they should have been, is now going down Old Chestnut Hill Road and it's got to be resolved. And if we wait longer...
Go after the engineer. Because what you're saying is...
The engineer is the town's engineer.
Okay, yeah, but that was whoever it was. They miscalculated.
Yes.
Okay, so what they miscalculated, now you're coming back to us and saying, "Well, they miscalculated, so now we have to fix it." And here's what's going to happen. Let me finish.
I'm just waiting.
Let me finish. What's going to happen is if this board says, "Okay, we find the money and this and that," then down the road, this happens again. It's just going to keep on coming. Every time an engineer or somebody makes a mistake in a couple of years down the road, the scenario, or should I say the layout changes, now all of a sudden the town's on for the hoof. I disagree. I don't think the town should fight. Let them go back to the people who made the mistake. If the engineer made the mistake, Andrews, then let Andrews.
Well, I don't...
You're 100% right, except the engineer is no filed bankruptcy. They're out of the picture.
Colin's our business.
Colin, yeah.
So...
They run a business.
What about insurance, bonds?
File bankruptcy, there's no...
There's nothing.
Well, that's what I mean. So now what happens, all this happens and if it happens again, it puts the town in harm's way again and we have to foot the bill. This is totally wrong.
I agree with you.
Mrs. Ding, I have something to say.
We agree 100%, but we have, we're trying to get this thing resolved because the residents are getting upset too.
The hardship on Old Chestnut Hill Road.
Right.
I just, I just want to say that we've had extensive talks of this. This isn't the first time this has come across us. And we actually approved the engineering, because I was the one to talk to Brian, to get the engineering and see what we needed to do. So I mean, I personally feel like, this is my view, if I'm going to say, "Go ahead with the engineering with town funds and the repair itself," I think we took it as we need to do this. That's what I got out of previous conversations. I don't have a problem trying to find the funds. And I know, John, it stinks. I know it does. And we said that in every meeting.
Well, it's wrong because what's happening is it just rolls right back to us and then we have to find the money and every time these engineers make a mistake or something like that, they just say, "Well, I'm going to go into bankruptcy." Yeah, I know all about the bankruptcy. That's a real joke too. These guys go into bankruptcy, they change their name and they're right back in the business the next day.
And I think that was a discussion we had about larger bonds, holding them for longer periods of time.
Right.
We had that discussion with the planning board.
Right.
As something to curtail this happening again.
I feel bad for the towns, for the people who live there and this and that. I think they get railroaded.
But it's not just the two families. It's the Old Chestnut Hill that even with the melting and the ice and the things of that sort.
And it always comes back to us and then we have to fix it. So that's why I said I'm totally against it because every time this happens, it comes right back to the planning board. It comes back to us because they mess up.
I just don't know if we can actually use Chapter 90 funds on an unacceptable road.
That's the whole thing. It's not an accepted road, so the town really isn't liable or have to do anything for it because we didn't accept it yet.
But what's going to happen?
You're accepting something we haven't, that doesn't even belong to us.
All right, there's a suggestion that was thrown out at the planning board that the town, that the town accepts the road as is and then makes the repairs, which is just a suggestion.
You're doing, you're doing the same thing.
Right. We're trying to come up with some kind of a solution that's going to work. We have, one way or the other, something has to be done. If we're going to sue somebody, that's going to cost us a lot of money too, okay? We're trying to come up with a solution where we can not have to sue anybody, pick up these funds. It's not a lot...
How many people are involved?
Ten, fifteen families?
Good. Tell them pay half. At least come up with something.
No, it's only two people in Brown Bear Circle.
Why should the town foot the whole thing?
We're concerned about Old Chestnut Road. I mean, if something, if Old Chestnut Hill Road washes out, that's our, that's our deal and it's because it's overflowing from Brown Bear.
Right.
I mean, you're piggybacking.
So, so here's my thing. I think something's got to be done. We're way past, you know what? All the blame has been thrown out there, people, but I get all of that, but for this $9,200, they're going to...
Solve the problem.
Well, they're going to put some kind of guarantee on the work as well, the design. It's going to work. We're not going, we're not going to be back here in a year or two saying, "You know, we probably should have put a bigger pipe then to go around from it."
They estimated to handle so many gallons of water and it's, usually they go, I don't know, they usually they go by hundred-year storms when they figure...
Right.
Things like this. So I'm guessing if they put that in there...
They'll stand behind it or something.
I'm, yes.
Right.
I'm sure that we won't have another problem now like that.
I think we would have had a minimal need that.
My point here is that we have the responsibility to the younger residents in the neighborhood. You know, you have freezing issues in the wintertime on Old Chestnut Hill Road and the like. We need to do something about it and I would say we take this as a learning experience in going forward, but we've got to do it. That's my opinion.
Right now it's costing us, the town, extra money because the Highway Department has to go up there quite often to make sure that road is sanded in that one spot when you don't have to do it anywhere else in town because of the overflow from those drains. I, it's, I know what you're saying, John. I agree with you 100%. You're right, but I'm looking at...
I see it's coming right back again on another...
That's why I say they got to stand behind it. We're going to know in a couple of years, no?
That's what I'm, what I'm saying, Bob, is say we yes, say yes to this and down the road, we have the same scenario again. It comes back and bites us again. You know, I mean, what does legal say about all this? We don't even own the road.
We'd be, the planning board, the town planner, spent a great deal of time speaking with legal on this and legal's opinion was that the town should just unfortunately fix the problem. That litigation would cost far more than the cost to just make the repair.
I agree.
But with all that said now, all right? Me being the bad guy because I don't think it's right, but that's only my opinion.
None of us think it's right, John.
Where is this money going to come out of now?
Well, the thing is, is if you accept the road as is in November, then we ask Highway to AMOC some money and fix it because it will be a town-accepted road. If it's not a town-accepted road, then we need to either come up with it through funds, through transfers, through whatever, and Fund 92.
Okay, my only question to that, Jennifer, is the, the planning board's accepting it as is. What other little hidden things that we have there that they need, they're going to have to go back and evaluate this whole road and everything to make sure they didn't miss anything?
Well, that's why we hire licensed engineers to give us their professional opinion. I'm a carpenter. This gentleman was, you know, another trade and we have different trades.
Did you walk, did you be, and see that?
Our hearts are in the right place, but we need to depend... Our hearts are in the right place, but we need to depend on a licensed engineer to give his evaluation and his recommendation.
Fine, but did you do a check and balance? Did you bring him on the site and he went over everything and explained it in detail?
Yes.
He, he didn't do this from pictures. He went to the site.
He went to the site, they engineered it, they surveyed it.
And he's putting a pipe cap here.
The water, the water just there, when this runs out.
I'm only asking the question because I deal with this all the time, and there's a check and balance for everything. I just wanna make sure it's just a, another thought by me...
You're a hundred percent right, John.
To make sure we didn't miss anything, the board didn't miss anything, and then we all look foolish because there was an oversight on some little thing that just caused another big problem. That's all.
John, when this gentleman, this engineer was there, the town planner was there with him, and I was there as well, and he looked at the whole road and looked at the catch bases, and then went over the plans that we had from our engineer, the ones that were accepted, and this is what the plan he came up with and said, this will work.
Yeah, I might add that...
So he didn't just, he didn't just look at it from pictures, he was actually there on the tree.
Well, you know what, the only, the only thing I can say about this whole thing, the planning board did, did their diligence on this whole thing, and they went step by step.
We did.
And you're coming to us and saying, everything is there.
And this is the only thing that we've had, and we've been down now for five years, six years, something like that.
The, the, the water in the circle all runs back. There's no, it, it, the engineer looked at it, doesn't see any, any other flaws in this.
When the water runs out of that ten-inch pipe, where's it going? Into the woods?
Yes.
Correct. On that person's property. It's not going onto somebody else's property.
On his property.
Okay, now, what I'm gonna ask you is, now you're creating wetlands.
It's already there.
It's already there.
The topography of the land already pitches towards that area. He's not create, he's not locating this pipe to where it goes uphill.
Okay, don't mind.
It's going downhill to existing...
This, this, these lines here, John, that could be much more distinct, but that's a wet area, right here. Yeah, but it runs right here. It comes this way, and this is all wet area back here, and...
That's all in the records? I mean, he has that on his...
Yeah, he, he has access to topography, maps that show the topography of the land, and he's directing that pipe to go naturally downhill. And again, this is a mass licensed engineer that we have to relay on, rely on his expertise to say that this is the easiest, least expensive way to solve the problem from the water that's going on Chestnut Hill Road that's going down several hundred feet.
Alright, so now you're gonna accept the road, and then we're gonna have to get highway in to repair it.
If it's accepted, there may be more funds available through different sources.
Did anybody bring this across to Brian yet and explain to him that if the board does accept it, what's the impact of his thing?
We haven't talked to him yet. We, we came talking to you about it. We'll go to him, we'll talk about it. He, he can't do anything about it right now anyway, so I mean, we, we want to make sure that the board of selectmen understood what was going on here before we roll on further and talk to people.
I think if we're gonna invest ninety-two and fix it, we have to get an easement from the property owner, because we have to go onto their property, lay a pipe, and then maintain it. So, I mean, if we're gonna do that, you're gonna want it to be your road. You're gonna be, you're gonna wanna be the one maintaining it and keeping it on top of it.
I understand that, but there's other things that come into play, Jennifer. You're putting a pipe on a person's land. Like, you're right, you need an easement, you need this, and now we have to take care of this pipe and make sure we don't have, beavers going in there now and start making homes in there, whatever. I'm just...
I, I know what you're saying, yeah.
Is the final coat of asphalt on this circle of road? It is, okay, okay.
But it would only be disturbed that one section across the road at the entrance.
From tank to tank.
Right, right, got it.
Well, what, what is your next step, Brian?
Our next step is, if you agree with us, and we'll try and find the money, or go to highway, or get this accepted, whatever, we're gonna talk to Brian, and myself and Joe, the engineer, are gonna go up and talk to the person that lives in Lot Two here about an easement on the property, and explain to him what we wanna do, what has to be done to solve the problem.
Before the board gives their blessing, I think you need to do a little bit more to come back again to us and say, Brian, we talked to Brian, yes, she is gonna give us the easement, yes, we got everything in order and this and that, and then you can move forward with, because right now, it hinges on a couple of things that you haven't done yet.
Oh, the most important thing, I think, is the easement. Because then after that, it, it comes a highway.
Then once you have, right, then once you have the easement, this and that, come back to it and say, okay, we have everything in the play.
Okay.
We have the easement, she agreed to it, she signed a consent form or whatever how it's laid out. Then you come back to the board and say, I have all the ducks in a row, as I would say, and then we can go from there.
We have one before us.
So, so, once we accept it, he, Brian's gonna own it. That, that's that, right?
Once we accept the road.
But I would like to get his input as to what...
Right.
And that's what I'm saying. I don't feel comfortable right now doing this because the thing is, is I don't have a problem with what you said. I don't have a problem with what I see, but I do have a problem is she or he, whatever, the owner, did not say yes to an easement to put it there. Because if they say no, we're back to drawing, Brian.
We didn't wanna go see...
If they say no, excuse me, John, if they say no, they have to plow their road, they have to sand their road, and they're stuck at the water. So it's a win-win situation for the...
I understand that, but you still need the person to say...
Oh, I, I agree with you, but I, I doubt very seriously that you would say no to something that would benefit her or him or whatever, that couple.
The, the cost doesn't involve an easement. So what is legally, what is that?
A legal description by the engineer.
So there's no, um, dollar there associated with the easement?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We, we want it to come to the board of selectmen first.
Is there any paperwork involved or not with the taxes of the land and the easement?
Cause I have easements on my property.
I just wanted to ask, cause she runs the department.
I would say that we would, one, get the...
Nothing personal.
Oh, no, nothing taken.
Get the owner to agree to the easement, so that we know we can do the work. Two, have a workshop with Brian. Brian prefers workshops to discuss things, so maybe have a workshop between planning and Brian and, and selectmen.
That's fine.
And see if, if the road is accepted, is he able to fund it, because it probably won't go till spring. That's the thing, because you have to accept it in November, you won't be able to probably get to the work.
Until springtime.
That's what I'm thinking, right?
That's why I was saying that, John. There's a couple more things that we need to do.
I, I agree, but the reason we're here, we want the board of selectmen to know what the problem is, what we think is, what it's gonna take to solve the problem, and we want you to know what's going on.
I don't wanna accept the road if the person's not gonna give us an easement.
Right, I agree. I agree, but that's our next step after we talk to you, is we're gonna talk to the person about an easement.
Brian, that's probably the...
I don't think so.
Exactly. I don't wanna accept it. I, I would say no right now because the thing is, is we'll accept it, then we own it, then we have a problem.
We have a problem now without accepting it. We have all of Old Chestnut Hill Road getting worse every winter.
I, I understand that, but you also have a solution.
And that is? Oh, this, correct, right.
That's what I'm saying. You have a problem, but you have a solution.
But if we do nothing, that's...
I'm not saying do nothing. We need to get, like Jennifer said, a couple little more things, and then once we do that...
Just so we don't accept it and then own a bigger problem.
Everything is in steps, but we want you to know what's going on before we go ahead and start doing something that you don't agree with. Now, we understand, we're all on the same page.
Yep.
Now, we'll go see the person about an easement, and we'll talk to Brian, we'll have a workshop. It, it's, it's gonna come in steps.
I think the general consensus is we wanna fix it, but we wanna make sure that it's done right.
Okay, that, well, so do we.
So we're not caught over our heads with anything.
Exactly. But we want to show you what the cost is gonna be and tell you upfront what the, what the problem is and how to solve the problem.
Do we have any other issues for the selectmen on the planning board?
I think the other two issues we have, we're gonna be talking to them in the tenth about, I don't think you wanna tie it.
Is that the, um...
That's the development on Thayer Street.
Which side?
This one here.
Same side as the school.
The left-hand side.
Other questions? Are they selling a lot up there recently? Are they supposed to be showing lots?
Dave, this is a stop, this is a stop right there. Yeah.
Showing a lot.
Yeah, we're having a problem with him.
Right, they're on the internet, they're selling several lots, and not one of them is legal.
Yeah, well, the person who went up was very well knowledgeable and asked lots of questions and kinda got the cold shoulder.
I just...
But they told me, and I said, I don't know if they're supposed to be doing that, so...
No, they're not. He'll gladly take your deposit, whether or not your friend would get it back, I don't know.
Oh, no, they didn't.
Yeah.
It's all that for the case.
We're having a serious problem, and we are working on it. We're gonna fill you in, the board of selectmen, on what, what's going on and what we're doing. And the other item is one seventy-one, Central Street, though.
Yeah, we got that one too.
Right?
Right.
Any other?
Can you help set up a ready for this on the same night and do the others?
Um, is it the seventeenth of August, I think?
Well, thank you for that, Blaine.
Well, matter of fact, if you want, it's not on the agenda for that meeting, but we'll try. I'll talk to Joe, our planner, and we'll try and get this easement thing settled before we come back to our next meeting. We'll probably have something...
That plays a big part.
Yeah, oh, I know it does. I know it does, but this way, you all know what's going on and what we're doing and trying to do.
I think...
You feel good with that, that estimate, ninety-two hundred dollars?
That's what they, they said it would cost roughly, ninety-two hundred dollars to do that job.
Not that they couldn't go off a quote, see if we get a better price, but that's what he feels, that probably at a prevailing rate scale, maybe it could be done for less money.
Right.
Yeah, plus it has a contingency of fifteen percent, so...
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, thank you for your time.
I know each one.
I think that's lost, Richard.
You're right.
Okay, we'll go back to, uh, meeting minutes. May eighteenth. My, my question there, Jen, did you?
I just had two items. One would be a removal of a sentence, which was on page five, first full paragraph. And it was in regards to Mr. Barrett, um, talking about the administrator position. The sentence is fourth line in, it says, "This was her idea in regards to talking about the job description and assisting in transition, and the board ended up slicing her throat and throwing her to the curb." I, I just believe that sentence should not be in a form of... It's in the minutes.
This was, this was the minutes that was taken right from the video.
No, and I agree it was taken from the video, but I don't believe it should be...
Oh, that needs to be taken out. You're right, that, that's ugly.
So, when I first read it, there was a couple of things, but then I, rereading it, I, I, I was able to let some things go. Um, and then the next thing, so that would be amending, um, that sentence out, and I would like, um, the sentence put in that when I asked Mr. Thuat if he had seen the minutes prior to our meeting, and his answer was no. I would like to see that included into our minutes. It was a question I asked, and it wasn't noted in the minutes, so those are my two.
You did ask Mr. Thuat a question.
Yeah, I asked him if he had seen the minutes prior to being handed them that evening.
And he said no.
And he said no, that's not reflected in our minutes. So I would like that reflected. Those are the only two things I have. The removing of the...
That wasn't there?
No.
Or it shouldn't be, because he came out, he wanted that right out.
Yep, and that was on page six.
Motion to accept, uh, some of...
With amendments, yeah.
So Helen, if you could edit it, um, oh.
It's all done. You can take it out. The other thing is gonna go away. Thank you, Jennifer. Kayla for signing for the next regular meeting.
May nineteenth. Those were the, um...
Interviews.
Interviews for town council. I think, um...
I don't think you had a quorum to vote on that.
No, not until this point, uh, but we do now.
I think motion to accept the minutes on May nineteenth.
Hold on a second now.
Rule?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting on June eighth. The question I, I had was, uh, this, this was the meeting where, um, a motion was made to bring in the DLS to do audits, and at that time, um...
I don't think I was here. I don't think I was here for Jennifer.
I don't have the minutes, and I don't have my iPad with me, so I don't have access to previous...
The, the whole point here is that, um, when we voted on it, as you recall, the, the idea was to go for all nine units. And I was proposing three units. That's, that's too broad a scope for DLS.
Won't they come in back and ask us?
They, they're asking us to, to narrow the scope.
Didn't we put them in order of importance? We ordered them.
That's, that's the way that...
We rearranged them, so like, the first ones were the most important, and then...
Right.
That's how I recall it.
So that, that's in, in the minutes of the, that order. Now, I'm just gonna clean the page.
I'm gonna get some more.
Thank you, you got it, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you. Almost, I thank you. I would have grabbed you one, but you were hurt that far. I told Helen to buy a fan. She'd be a, a big fan. She was a nervous fan.
Something.
With all the lights on and everything, I'm gonna bet you it's fine.
I hit this man's cheek. I'm looking for the meeting, uh, minutes of, uh... May nineteenth.
May nineteenth or June eighth?
June eighth, I'm sorry.
June eighth.
June eighth.
There am I. I don't have one with me.
Six, eight, right here. Okay, the, the order, what you stated, uh, that the board voted on was, uh, the, the first one was review of financial operations, the se, uh, second was assess financial conditions, fiscal health, analyze, uh, town government, uh, government structure, explore feasibility of regionalizing slash consolidating service. Uh, I think that personally, the two important points would be to, uh, review, uh, financial operations, but more importantly, I think, assess financial conditions and fiscal health of the town.
Don't you get there by doing the first one?
We do, uh, but we, we're looking forward, uh, we're not necessarily looking forward to it, but I think we're gonna see some, uh, significant financial impacts on the town when we do something with this building.
Cause I, I think Rich weighed in on those too, right? Didn't he?
Yeah, he wanted to do all of them.
Well, and, and to his point, I think he's right. I mean, I don't know if they're just kinda pushing back like, whoa, 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 whoa. You guys maybe want all of these.
Yeah, in, in the very beginning, they, they, they said that your focus is too broad. They don't have all that resource to go through all of these. Rich's point was that he didn't want a cafeteria-type menu. Rich's point was that he didn't want a cafeteria type menu where they could pick and choose.
Didn't from that meeting, we put them in an order and we said, if we had to choose most important to least important, this is our order. And that was the order in which we all agreed upon that night. So if they come in and they say, we just, we want to focus on two or three, shouldn't we select the two or three that we had at the top of that list?
Yeah, that was the point of the whole thing. I mean, hello.
So so it's in the meeting, in 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 the notes, that order?
I think they, I don't think it's the order they have a problem with. I think it's within each item specifically, what are you looking for? In other words, review of financial operations. What operations? Your collections, your deposits, your accounting, what part of your financial operations? From the brief conversation I had with her, she asked me where the problems were, where the questions were, where the concerns were. And I told her that she would have to get that from the board.
So they're narrowing it down.
So they want more specific within each category.
And she will be here on the fifth?
The fifth, August fifth, yep.
And she's meeting with you and Marilyn and.
Lisa, there's actually a schedule, is in your mailbox, the schedule I got in today's, I got by email today. She's looking to meet, I think, with the chairman of the board at three and then the other board members at three-thirty or four o'clock on that day.
Did you see it on the top of there?
Right, right here, dated July seventeenth.
Yeah, it's not a schedule though.
In the box.
Here it is.
Doesn't have any.
Yeah, no, it's not the one with the list. There was a second one. Did you check your box today?
Yeah.
Oh. Do you have the times, Mr. Oposse? Do you have the schedule with the times?
No.
Oh, maybe I didn't put a copy in your box, but I will get those to you.
So with that being resolved. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June eighth. So moved. Rule?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lar was not present at that.
All seven.
Minutes are June fifteenth.
This is Wing not present at this one.
I I don't have any comments on it. John?
Don't do accept.
Second.
Rule?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first public forum.
Wow, place is loaded tonight.
Correspondence, there really isn't. Correspondence, so we'll just bypass that and the next. There's appointments and resignations. And this is for the Town Hall Study Committee. Jerry Finn, Richard Gravelo, Lincoln Barmer. We'll vote on these individually, then it'll be a prayer committee and a centennial celebration.
I make a motion to appoint Jerry Finn, Rich Gravelo, and Lincoln Barmer to the Town Hall Study Committee.
Second.
Aye.
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 I want to thank those three gentlemen for stepping up. Memorial Day Prayer Committee, Jean, Jean Poole.
So moved.
Second. Rule?
Aye.
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 And the Celebration Committee is going to be Pam, I'm gonna mess up her name, it's Koebeitich, Pam Dean. Let's see, no, and can I add a second person to that? Cause it came to me after the fact, it's Adam DeRosa.
Can you spell the both last names?
Pam is K O B E T I T S C H. And DeRosa is D E S R O S I E R.
So moved.
Second.
Rule?
Aye.
Aye.
Executive Secretary report?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Right.
Old business? Nothing. New business, let's take care of. Two things that were not on the agenda was the Conservation Commission request for legal services, and this has to do with one seventy-one. Central Street. We have copies of the request. So moved.
Second.
Rule?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, there's in in this this new case, you get some M I A A, M I I A audit requests from the town to determine who's eligible for health insurance. It's it's no cost to us, but they're requesting that they audit the individuals that aren't health insured through the town. And they're qualified for so, and basically the town has to agree to remove from health coverage any subscriber who does not provide the information requesting that kind of thing. So I would entertain a motion for the board to sign.
Mrs. Standard, don't we do this over you?
Um, it's actually a fairly new state law. It's now required every two years.
So moved.
Second.
Rule?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have that. I don't know where it went.
There's. What do you have here, John? In in the packet, there's a request for legal services for the planning board. And this basically has to do with. To to cease and desist ours were not upheld.
Second one. This is the second.
Second one.
Yeah.
So, motion to approve the request for legal services.
So moved.
Planning group.
Second.
Rule?
Aye.
Okay, in in the packet, there's an animal control warrant. The board of selectmen is required to issue a warrant to the animal control officer on an annual basis pursuant to Mass General Law. Chapter one forty, section one fifty-one A and one fifty-three, to ensure that the town and the animal control officers officer. Are acting in full compliance with the state statutes attached is an animal control officer warrant for this board's signature. This warrant will be posted, will be online. I'd entertain a motion that the board sign.
So moved. Second.
Rule?
Aye.
Aye. Special one-day liquor license. For an event to be held on Saturday, October first, I'm sorry, August first, twelve noon to six P M at the the Paulish Hall. All the, I think all the approvals are in place.
Chief is good.
The chief is good with it?
Mm-hmm.
Motion.
So moved, second.
Rule?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I don't see anything that we missed at this point. Just to say that our next regular.
Oh, can I send them to the farm?
I'm sorry.
Even though, that's okay, even though it's not there. I just wanted to let the residents know that the Centennial has sent out a bulk of their fundraising. We're working on our P O boxes since we ran into a glitch, so fundraising efforts have been sent out to our community. And last Friday, Mrs. Vernon and myself, we're lucky enough to go to W M R C. Millville was selected as the hometown hopeful from asphalt engineering. And W M R C fourteen A M, fourteen ninety A M is spotlighting Millville for the next month. So Karen and I went up there and we talked about the Centennial efforts. And we also talked about the upcoming Community Day that would be held in the park on September twelfth of this year, looking for vendors and and people of sorts to come on down. So that committee was very excited, cause that is really a three thousand dollar publicity grant that we got. And the efforts of that, that Margaret Carroll and Lois Salomi did in writing and persuading them to select us was, that was their effort. So together, the Centennial Committee is is forging ahead and and trying our best to raise funds and and work out all the kinks that we've been coming across. So I just wanted to let you know that and the townspeople know. So if you listen to W M R C, you'll hear some information about Millville and facts and things of that sort.
And a thank you to Margaret and Lois and their effort, for their effort. While on that subject, I'm just, this is a real quickie. On the P and W C M R P C freight rail, I I did that walk at site visit, site visits. And honestly, my opinion coming away from that is Millville has a great opportunity if we can do it. The, basically, Uxbridge sites are not suitable in that to get to the rail siding, you have to cross the river and that costs a lot of money. We have a better advantage here. The two drawbacks here is that we're getting clarification on on the the ownership of some of those parcels there. And right away from Central Street, the the lead council from P and W, if any developments are gonna occur there, they won't allow passage over the track. So we'd have to look at the.
We can go over the railroad tracks anytime we want.
Well, for highway and emergency purposes.
The town has access, but not if you were to put a business of some some sort, if you were to develop that piece of property.
So, and and the last point on that is there'll be a a report that'll come out later in the year on on the potential for freight rail through Millville. That's just F Y I. Next regular scheduled meeting will be August third at seven P M. We'll do signatures now. And then we'll go into executive session, then come back into the regular session to adjourn.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion, so moved. Second.
Rule?
Aye.